Good luck everybody, good luck us! Start the training! I skipped the range building today, let's just dive into the trading. It looks good, it's fun, people can participate, it's interactive, you know? 11 followers today, I don't think so, let me restart the session. I don't think we got 11 followers in the last 10 minutes. Alright, here we go! Sorry that I have to lower the case a little bit because I want my voice to be more important right now. Yes, let's raise this! For sure! Suited fives or something is bottom, right? And the big blind calls! I kinda guessed that already! Uh, not a great board for our range, um... And we do have some equity though, we have some overcards, we have some runner flush, we have some runner straights, so I'd be inclined to still bet. I'd be inclined to get some fold equity from queen x and king x. That is kinda instant default, like king 5 without the right suits, you know what I mean? Just gonna fold king 5, you know what I mean? Lots of fold equity against better hands still, I think I like a bet. Small bets, two blinds. It's wrong! Good start yet. We'll see soon what was the right answer. I'm gonna have to fold to the raise. Our hand is not strong enough to withstand a raise, so we fold. But the problem was my c-bet. Uh... No. Uh... Sorry for this, how did we go back to the... I never use this, uh... This zoomed in, uh, spot. Where's the best of buttons where you can go fast forward? Uh, raise people was fine. Well, I wanna dive through this hand, how can we click that? Why am I such an idiot? Uh... Look, if I zoom out... I'll tell you what I... Uh, if I zoom out... We got these little arrows here, where you can easily skip through. Uh, and then we see, we go here, we go here, and then we, then it's our turn to bet or not. Oh, betting is fine, but my sizing was off. You do see that a lot when, um... When it's a more polarized betting strategy, that if you check or bet, it's a larger bet. If you range bet, it's smaller, it's more turret, more turret 20%. So I guess, that makes a lot of sense, because I already said, this is not our board really, right? So if we bet on a board that's not really good for us, uh, we bet less often, and we bet a little larger in general, I think. So that's why. And it's also pretty dynamic, right? Lots of cards that can change the winning hand, lots of draws, lots of overcards on the 9x. So, it looks dry, but it's pretty dynamic, you know what I mean? It's not... The turn will change a lot of winning hands into losing hands and all the way around, so... That's why it's dynamic, even though it looks a bit boring, right? Dynamic board. And we go larger on dynamic boards, so that's good, that sounds, that sounds logical. Should've seen that. Now I will zoom in again. If my browser wants to, there we go. But this looks better, right? This looks much better, but I can't find that arrow that's for skipping back and forward. It's a bit weird. Tino Martin is playing. Let's raise the ace! Easy start. Uh, king 10 10? Not in love with this, but we have range advantage, of course. Uh, we could probably range bet on a board like this. And then we also bet 8 7, but this is really bad hand, so... On this board, I think it's, if it's a range bet, it's 32%. Um... You'd say larger, okay, so you go with the same logic as the last hand, right? You think it's also checks? And then if we bet, we go larger? I mean... I guess I can also go with that. It's a good board for our range, right? The big blind... I mean, who has more 10x? Um, he has a bit more 10x, because he had more offsuit 10x that he defends, right? Like, things like 10 6 offsuit, 10 7 offsuit, 10 8 offsuit. He would defend those and he would not open those. But on the suited side, it's a bit the same, I think? He also has more on the suited side. Because he defends all the suited tens, and we don't open everything. Uh, that's not, that's not even true, right? He could open 10 do suited on the button. Interesting. So I'm trying to decide who has more tens. It's a little bit more for the big blind, but it's, in general, we have more, we have the better range still. Um... Because we have aces, we have kings, we have king 10, we have tens, we have queens and jacks and stuff, so we have a good, we have a good range here, but... I like a check! Long story short. Okay, 20%. It's at least in the, in there. And we turn a 7, we turn more showdown value. You don't wanna really build a pot here. We do get called by draws though, and protect our hands a little bit. If he has like ace jack or queen jack or... Stuff like that, flush draws. But I can see a bet! With a hand like this. Um, a small bet? Do we like a small bet here, chat? You don't really wanna build a big pot with this, but... What do you think Anaconda? You're my, uh, you're my go-to, uh, person right now. Everybody else that is still tuning in, welcome to the stream, we're doing some button versus big blind poker today in GTO wizard. You're an uncertain audience, hey, that's okay Turner, welcome back! And just, uh, just enjoy the show. We'll play some games later. Uh, I would check, okay. I can see a bet! But I kinda like checking too, because, uh... We don't wanna build a big pot with this hand, you know? We could also go bigger, like if we bet, go bigger, because we need, we need that protection on the dynamic board, right? Lots of straight and flush draws for the big blinds. That he might call us with. But I'm a little, I'm a little unsure as well. Let's go for the big bet, let's go for the binky big bet. That's bet 5. It's not good. Let's see chat. Flop? Uh... We should mostly bet small, okay. Mostly bet small on the flop. We did check, was okay-ish, 30%. Uh, on the turn, we check or bet small-ish. There's 30% or 55% though, that's not that small, right? That's mid-sized, 55%. So, you know, it's very mixed! It's very mixed! If he can call 55% big, you get a point, Binky. Okay, we go again! And of course, we can always, yeah, we can always just in-game, you know, it's, uh... We don't have to play as GTO pots, but we're just trying to learn from GTO today. Um, I like a bet here. We have the runner hearts, we have still range advantage, as almost always, of course, but still on this board, we have a bigger range advantage than on like a 6, 7, 9 or something. These cards are usually good for us. So I take me bet? Where's my two blinds? 1.9 now? Okay, that's not the right decision, basically. 5% of the time only. We're getting crushed today. Um, I don't like a call here. Even though it's a small raise though, but... Getting, yeah, we're getting 3-2, uh, getting a very good odds here, but... Yo! Thanks Moose for the sub! You rolled low! Thanks for the sub Moose, good evening! Nice new video from your very chilled adventures again this weekend. I literally watched the whole thing! I was planning to skip through it! But I, but I ended up watching the whole thing! It was kinda fun, it was kinda fun. If I had a, if I had a driver's license, I could see myself being a van guy, but I don't have really. Uh, I'm not gonna fold to this raise, right? Oh man, we are getting smashed here. So, the flop? We call that a small raise, we have enough equity, okay? I'm surprised about that. I'm surprised about that. Let's move on. We're going that slow, we can move on. Yo, yo, you're broker! As well, welcome to the stream! We get aces. Easy c-bet. Small sizing. Maybe could even click in on bigger sizes. Because if we have a 5, we wanna go big 2. But how many 5s do we have? If we have 6s or 7s, we wanna go bigger 2, right? Because there's so many overcards, but I think it's generally better to bet small. Okay, maybe my, maybe I should follow my, I don't know which instinct I need better, the one that I first go with or the second one? But we have to go bigger there apparently. Welcome Yatante! Welcome YoYo, welcome everybody. Turner is not looking forward to a meeting tomorrow, i.e. Uh, I think we call here, because we can easily get it in on the turn and river, because he is only 20 blinds behind. Not the deepest spot ever. I think I like a call here to keep his bluffs in. In-game, we might jam here once in a while against recreationalists, right? Because, you know, what are we, what are we afraid of? Maybe we can get more value, but... I think I'm just gonna call here. Okay, that's correct. You often see that with GTO, that he, if you get raised, they have a strong hand, and you can still get it in on the turn on the river, we just call. Way more often than you might see actual players do. Uh, and now, the king on the turn! Interesting. How do, he doesn't have a king a lot, right? How many king has, he's gonna raise the flop, uh, against us? But it's really hard to get value here against the, against his 5x and his 6s and 7s. Right, he just three-bet those pairs a lot though. He could still have a deuce. But our goal is to get it in, of course. But the king is not great to get value from, I think. Because he doesn't have that many king x. And there's only one SPR left, right? There's one street and one SPR left, so... Maybe check back is best here. We do let him get there sometimes if he, uh... If he check raises the flop at 3 4, 3 4 or something, right? Or 6 7 of hearts or something? If he, GTO is that creative, right? You don't have to ask if he's creative, GTO, they are creative! So, uh... So, uh... Bet 4 is, oh yeah, I like, I like small bet too, in-game, I would probably bet here. But it's very small. Uh... Moose says, thanks for watching the CMK van live. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I like your videos, man, it's very chilling. Let's go for the 4, okay, it's, it's not in there. I'm gonna call. It's out of, uh, it's out of GTO, so we don't get to, uh, he has ace 5. That's good, that's good, we did win the hand, but that's not what we're here for, right? Uh... Flop sizing was wrong? We should go a little smaller, oh wow! Yeah, that's okay, we have to bet 1.1 only. It's so small! Uh, I don't mind my 33%, though, that's fine. That's fine too. Uh, turn, we should check! And never bet, right? Yeah! GTO is alive, we induced and, uh... And, uh, he got up to jam his ace 5 on us. Perfect result! I had noodles for lunch, YoYo! Well, it was my breakfast as well, I only had one small meal before I went on my bike ride. I had some noodles late in the afternoon, that was my breakfast as well. I broke the fast with that. Then I went on a ride, at like 8 o'clock? No, 7 o'clock, and I got back at 8. And then I had my dinner. One plate, so... I'm doing good today, healthy, health-wise, so far. Yo, welcome Cthulhu! Uh, we of course bet here, the only question is sizing. We are pretty deep here. There are draws there. The big blind also has the ace 5s and ace 3s and 5 6s and lots of flush draws. I kinda like a bigger bet here. I kinda like the 5. Or like, maybe 3, I don't know. 5 is big, 80%, but we are deep, right, so... We also wanna go bigger with our good hands if we're deep stack, to get it in on the turn and river. I'm gonna go with the 5, and we are getting crushed today! But that's, that's an opportunity to learn, right? It should've gone smaller there apparently, we keep on playing the hand. Uh, we bet again. Uh, very big, I think. Double flush draw, double straight draw, everything is here, this is the most dynamic turn you can see. Right, he has straight rolls around the king and the 10, and around the 4 and the deuce. He has flush draws on both ends, so we go maybe overbet here. We can't really overbet, then we have to go 32, that's a little big. But then I go 13, I go the next best thing, I think I go 13 here. But I think we go large here, right? I'm not in love with getting it in on the river, but, uh... You're running trash, yes! I need your help, Yatante! We're getting owned! We're getting owned as a team, okay? We're getting owned as a team, not, not me personally. I can't be held responsible! I like a bit back, I like a bit back, a big, big, I can't speak. Shall we bet? I think I'm gonna bet. There will be another hour of this, Yatante! There will be another hour of this. And then a bit after 11, I think we switch to some other content. I can't speak! Oh, that opens Grom Inspector! You don't need the Grom Inspector! What is happening? There we go, I'm gonna bet 13, chat. Again, that's the wrong option basically, right? It's not, it's, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the tree, 10%, but... We're getting really bad results so far. That's why we're doing this. Luis Capaldi! So now we're waiting for the big blind to decide! And it never takes so long, what is going on? He's slow rolling us, chat! The GTO is slow rolling us! Or maybe it's broken, I don't know. We can, we can see the orange dots moving here. I don't know what's going on! Yo, little Vakiria, welcome to the stream! We're getting crushed, oh, he folds, okay! Where do we learn, we learn the flop? We, we decided for a large bet, but we mostly bet very small. Really? So on the king 4 deuce with lots of draws, just because it's hard for the big blind to have so many hands that can continue, I guess that's why we go smaller? Even though there's some draws that we wanna protect against, but it's not important enough? Got this king 4 deuce, he goes small, alright. And on the turn, I go, I went for 13, oh! Hey, but this is hopeful! I said, we should, we should go very large here. Because of the double draw board, and we have, uh, yeah, we wanna get value, and we're deep stacked. But the most chosen option here is overbet, 125%. And I would've chosen that if I saw it in the options. But I fucked up the interface read, I read the interface wrong again. So didn't think that this option was there. Um... Yeah, last week we did short stack, Yatante! So I made a, I made up a drill, this is only button and big blind spots, vice versa, so we can be dealt both spots, both, both positions. And it's all 30 big blinds or deeper. 30 big blinds and deeper, but it mixes the stack sizes as well. Now we are the big blind for once, we can mix it up here. I defend the 10 three suited, we defend basically all suited hands. In general. In general. We flop. We flop a good hand, flush draw and a pair. We start with a check. Uh, we have a small bet from the button. It is interesting. I would raise a lot of flush draws. And I kinda like raising this one as well. We have so much equity. And, you know, we need some protection, you know, because our tree is such a low pair. So yeah, I would almost always check raise this. But if we have a better pair with our flush draw, I, I think GTO likes to call a bit more often. Because our showdown value is better, right? And we can still improve our hands. So the lower the pair with our flush draw, maybe the more often we check raise? Is that a thing? Um... I'm just making that up, I'm just trying to make sense of this. Yeah, I, I like check raising to 5. 4, I mean... We're not that deep, 4, I could see 4 as well. This is basically 6, 5.7. I'm gonna go with chat! We're getting smashed today in every spot! But sometimes it's like close to the real size, right? Because we have all the sizes available, we can still be close to the real answer, right? Often in-game, it's, it's most important if we bet or not. And then if it's small or big, and then, you know, the exact sizes, you know? We're not bots, we're not bots. Um... We did bet 5 blinds, and we get called. Do we continue betting on this turn? We have a bit of an awkward stack size, it's, we go, I think we go small or jam sometimes here. But I'm pretty sure this hand doesn't really wanna jam. We can't go big, like we can't bet 12 and then have an awkward size left on the river. So I think we go small or jam. I can, I can also see a check call here. What do you guys think here on the turn? The 9 doesn't really help us. Does it help my range? Not in, not, not in the slightest. We, we never really check raise a draw that gets there with the 9. Um... Queen 9 maybe, for value. But that's about it. I don't, I don't really like the sizing, Yatante! Because if we bet like 10, the pot could become 37 if he calls. And we have 18 left. Nah, it's like, that's like less than half pot. Then the river is always annoying. Especially if you don't improve. Um... But I don't like 9. I like smaller or bigger. That's what she said! This is not good, I like smaller or bigger, but this is not a good size! GTO likes it, maybe, maybe GTO likes it. All-in! Yeah, I like all-in! I mean, I like in general with this stack size, I like check, small or all-in as my options. I mean, he might be, he might fold a better hand, right? He might fold 8s. Uh, 8 7. Uh... Jacks. Probably fold, GTO probably doesn't fold jacks, that's too strong probably here. But he might fold, uh, a 7, you know, or a pocket 4s, pocket 5s. And if you get called, we have lots of lights equity, so... I kinda like all-in here. Yeah, but the 9 is, I, I understand that, Binky, from this flop perspective, but the 9 doesn't really help my range in general, right? Which 9s help my range here? Like queen 9? Like which hands do I have in my range that get helped by the 9, you know? But he doesn't get help either, so it's like a blank. I guess, so... Let's go all-in! YoYo said all-in as well! Uh... What was the good size? Which, which street this was? Flop was wrong as well, by the way. Flop was just a call. Flop likes to check call with this hand. And then the turn? Oh, huh? This is out of GTO, okay. Because we fucked up the flop, the, the turn wasn't really, uh... We would never be correct. Let's move on. We were out of the GTO tree, so couldn't get feedback on the all-in on the turn. I liked it. I liked it. Uh, we defend every offsuit king against the button. But we also defend king 5. Yeah, we do three-bet sometimes. That's true, uh, Yatante. I should learn, think about three-betting more, in general. Of, in-game and in GTO, both, both spots, in real life and in my GTO training. Yeah, middle pair is often a check call, and especially on the ace high board, we don't have a range advantage at all. We had, we just have to defend. Sometimes get to showdown, yeah, call 900%. We did, we did something correctly. Uh, we get a good soul, but we just check call, I guess, if he goes small. He checks back. So I think we could... This is a spot where we often block better river for small size. Um... But I'm not sure this is the board for it, with the ace there. Like, what, like what hands can he call me with if I block that here? It's really tough, like queens? Like queens, jacks, tens, but probably not? So I, I'm, I'm always trying to consider if he should lead here, right? If he should block better river or go for tiny value here. But, it's probably too thin on this board, right? It's probably folding is, and how many pairs does he have? He mostly just have nothing, right? Maybe check call and hope he bluffs? Do we bluff? Do we call if he bluffs? Check is wrong, okay. He had queen 9 high and he checked back. We do go for the block bet. Hey, I'm, I'm, I'm the, I'm the king of block bets, chat! I didn't do it, but I thought about it and I, I mentioned it. Um... 18% pot bet. 100% of the time. It's also like protecting ourselves against bluffs a bit. That's the blocking aspect of it, and the value. We can get called by queens, jacks, tens, right? Probably not any worse hands. But it's interesting. Now, turn and river, you can do that a lot, Yatante! I've been, I've been implementing it in my games as well, in, uh, especially the river, uh, you know, and the turn as well, if it's a good card for your range, disregarded of your specific hand, I really try to lead the turn a lot more. And you put really the, the imposition player in a tough spot, because they don't, they don't like you leading in there, you know? But hey! Let's go, let's continue. Is this a hand with three-bet sometimes? Probably not. Yeah, but sometimes your hand does better with a lead. Like, if you don't wanna get checked back, for example. Because that, the board is too, too dynamic for that, or because you wanna bluff 2 streets to get him to fold up a mediocre hand. If they check back, it's, it's harder, because, you know, they can easily call the river, that's the beauty of position. So you're also denying him the beauty of position a little bit, right? By betting the turn out of position? Because they can't check back and call the river for one street and see the, see the hands. So you're like denying a little bit of their advantage by betting the turn. Uh, I think we just check fold this one and move on, okay? Tiny percent of raises, well. Not important. GTO likes to mix it up. Um... I think what I've seen from the big blind, the three-bet range is really around suited connectors a lot. I think we just call this. Flop top pair on a pretty bingo-y board, I lost my speak. Bingo-y board. Pretty wet, pretty wet board. Check raise, I guess. We need some protection, we can get value. So yeah, I like a check raise here. We often see we check raise our best jacks, best top pairs, plus some draws in general. Sometimes, of course, other pairs as well, but... I like a raise. Um... 5.5? Yep. That's good enough. Now we have a bit of an awkward stack size, honestly, with 22 blinds and 16. We definitely wanna bet again. The only question is the sizing again. Like, I feel jamming is a little overplaying our hand here, right? It denies equity, but that's, you know, it's a bit, a bit overplaying it. So I guess then we have to go for small, because there's no in-between here. Even though I could be wrong again. Um... So I think I like 5. 5 5 5. Binky also says, bet 55. Or percent, you mean this one, I guess. It's confusing, because it's also 5 5 5 as the size here. But I guess you mean 55%. It's a bit awkward again, this is like the same spot as like 10 minutes ago, where if they call, the pot becomes like 36 blinds. And what if it's a king of spades on the river, you know? Then we just get away, even though we are almost committed, we're not committed really, but... We would have like 13 blinds left in a pot of 36. We would have had 1/3 of the pot left. But that's, that's... We can still fold some rivers, right? If the, the king of spades, like one of the worst cards maybe, or the queen of spades. But because of that, I prefer the, the bit of a smaller size, but... Let's see if Binky is right or me. Okay, I'm wrong! There's no solution for this spot! Please buy the full version! No, this is... Uh... Can we still see? I don't wanna stop the session! Let's repeat and do something differently. Cliffhanger, yeah! We cannot answer this question today! Tune back, tune back in for, in seven days for the second edition, the second episode of Question Try to Own GTO! Sorry. Uh, Filster, thank you for the follow! I'm playing the hand again, chat. I'm playing the hand again. We check raise the flop to 55%, that's fine. And the question was the turn size. Oh, now he folds! Gonna get some claps in chat, chat, for replaying the same spot. The button has a different hand now. So we don't get to see the, the nice turn sizes this time. Oh, the music's a little loud, right? Sorry for that. Let's continue. Uh, this is borderline but fold, I think, in general. King four offsuit. Nice. Think it's king five offsuit, so we fold king four offsuit. Gonna go for a small break, by the way. Um, then we'll do another hour-ish of training, a little bit less probably. Let's make this the last hand. For the end of our five-minute break, then we continue. Definitely c-bet the ace-high board, this is a range bet. Bet two. Okay, sizing is off. What's the sizing? Even smaller, okay. Well, my idea was range bet small, so that's good enough, right? 20% is the best size, so I should bet more 20%. I often think about smallest bet as 33 is my smallest option. All right, we continue this in a couple minutes. Ahem, we're gonna continue the study. Button versus big blind, next hand, please. Here we go again. What did we learn from last hour? We got destroyed, but what is our big takeaway? Like, the sizing's mostly, right? Not necessarily the fact that we bet or check, it's often the size that were the problem. Let's continue with the queen six. Uh, let's check to the razor. We have a six and a runner flush draw. Ooh, he overbets, wow. He goes for nine blinds into six, but he can't fold. So I guess we have to call, right? Against a small size, I would consider raising, but I think we just have to call. Our hand is too strong. With the six and, uh, the runner flush draw. Maybe our first hands we start folding is the six without a runner flush against the big bet, because against a small bet, we never fold any pair on the flop. But against the big bet, we start folding some weak bottom pairs, I guess. So I guess we start folding queen six of clubs, for example. Um, but I think we call this one. What do you guys think? Anybody has an opinion about this? I hope I'm not getting the pull on, uh, I'm a little sniffy now after the, after the ride and everything. Call, okay, that's good, that's good, that's good. Now we do turn the flush draw. We check to the razor, I guess. I've just talked about leading sometimes on the turn, but I don't think this is a spot where we want to do that. Can we do check? No, not this time. I guess the king-high board, when he bets so large, it's like he's polarizing his range so hard into like aces, kings, ace, king, king, queen. That, yeah, we don't dunk on that turn, I think. We also don't wanna get check raised of our, of our hand. It's not check raised, we don't get, we don't wanna get raised of our hand. Uh, he does check back. Now the question is, do we have another spot? I think check fold, honestly, on this board. We also block some spades, so he hasn't done that, that many spades and and honestly think check fold, maybe. Um, or bet very small. Um. Yeah, but you can use the sliders, so there's more options than only these four. So there's an option to bet 2.5 here, 10%. I kinda like it. And GTO does it a lot when we have tiny value out of position on the river. Maybe I wouldn't do it in-game, but I, I think this might be the answer. Is there a music playing? Hai Lu Noro Po. Starting slowly, the song is starting slowly. It's there. So I think check calling, uh, what kind of bluffs do we think he has, you know? If, if we, if we have to bluff catch. He would probably continue lots of his draws on the turn as well, but when he checks back. What gets there and what, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I don't, I don't like check calling, I like, I like betting myself. It's wrong. The river. We check. But now, we wanna know, of course, so we need to study this spot. Uh, what if we check and they bet? Uh, on the river? So we check, because that's the correct answer here, and what if the button bets into us? For, let's say, eight blinds, third pot? Larger even? What's the strategy? Let me see what the strategy is. We have some bluffs here with ace-high even. Let's not dive into this too much. Uh, we could, we could get lost in this spot for hours, but we don't, we don't wanna do that. So let's say he bets eight. What's our calling range here in the big blind? And we had specifically queen six of spades. Uh. Can we see that? Oh, here, this is queen six of spades. We call, mostly. But we do, so you're, I think my small investigation here leads me to believe we do check call this hand, Yatan, so you might be up to something. We even have some check raises with this hand. Word zero? No, that's the raises. Uh. But it's really hard to read these things, uh. But yeah, we have some check raises, all-ins here, which I find very interesting. But let's go back to the trainer. No, don't worry about it, Mela. Don't worry about it. We, uh, we learned a lot today. We, we, we have a lot of spots where we were wrong, so that's, that's good. So this check raises sometimes. I've seen before today. But I think we're just gonna go for the call and see from there. Oh, we do, we do check raise this, I remem, I misremembered. I misremembered. Another dry king-high board, he checks back, okay. So in, in-game, if the, if the button checks back, I would often lead the turn. Because in-game, people don't protect their checkback range well enough, right? So in a $10 turbo, whatever, at the $8, $10 tournament, if the button checks back, I, I bluff a lot here. We have, need some equity, right? We can't go crazy, but I would go bluffing here a lot, but this hand is so weak. And GTO has some hands that he's checking back for showdown value, like ace highs, pocket fours maybe or something here, right? Um, so I don't like to turn this into a bluff, because it's just seven high with no draw, no, no, no backup, you know? But if we just check fold. We, we start betting 15% of the time. And check fold is okay, I guess. So that's okay-ish, but I'm, I'm already surprised that he, uh, does bet on the turn a tiny amount of the time here. As a, as a totally random bluff in air. Good enough. Uh, this gets close to a fold, I think. You might continue like jack eight offsuit for sure, jack seven offsuit maybe. I know it's every king, uh, queen is probably queen six or queen five, I think it's a fold. Yeah, I think it's jack eight offsuit. Ooh. We were once again, wrong. Yeah, the, but the, the GTO big blind defense is really loose. So it's jack four offsuit as the bottom. I don't really mind defending a little tighter than GTO though in-game. Uh, because most players don't open that wide. You need to open 50% of your hands on the button, right? Which includes jack deuce suited, jack three suited, then 10 three suited, nine five suited, you know, all these hands are included. If your opponent doesn't open as weak as those, we also should defend a little tighter, so. I'm okay with leaving all these offsuit jacks out and start defending like queen five off, jack eight off, what I said. But it's far off, we, we should go much wider, apparently. And every suited hand again is a defense. It's interesting. We, we improve our GTO knowledge, even though in-game we might not do it that wide. If you ask me. But this is also close. Um. I think it's okay. I'm pretty sure it's queen seven or queen eight is the border. Uh, I forgot if it's queen seven or queen eight. Who opens on the button this? I, I think queen eight is a, is a clear call. A clear open, I mean. But I think this might be a fold. Mela says fold. It's on the border, right? It's not super, I mean, if you get close to the border of these ranges, you're doing great. Um, you open it though, yeah. I think it's probably a good thing to open wider than GTO on the button. Um. So it's the other way around than what GTO says. I think GTO folds and Mela opens. 71%, it's literally border. 71%, so we also raise it 29%, okay. Good enough, it is border. If we know the border, we're doing really well. This is again, again a border. Border. Open the border. Okay, we get called by the big blind. Seven, eight, ten. This is a very dynamic board where the big blind nine, three-bet tens, eights. Doesn't have that much of a range advantage. It's not, I, I was gonna say it's a bad board for me, but we still have more sets than he has and more overpairs. So in terms of nuts, we have more. He has more straights, right? No, not even, because we also have jack nine offsuit. We also have jack nine offsuit, so it's not even, it looks awkward, but I feel like it's pretty good for my range still. Um, yeah, we have the king of spades and a runner straight draw. Very bad runner straight draw, but we have a runner straight draw. But I, yeah, my, my pre-GTO knowledge player would go big here because of the wetness of the board. But I'm not sure if this is the thing still. I mean, I know it's a thing sometimes, but I prefer to go bigger here, I guess, because we also check back sometimes, so we go bigger if we bet. Um. Yo, Tom Fan, good evening, my friend. We're doing some GTO studying again today, every Tuesday. Yeah, let's go big. Okay, 25% of the time, it's still not the best answer. The best answer, well, it's between check and bet small. So this is so funny, this is again, like counterintuitive to me. But I think the answer here lies in the fact that we do have range advantage here and nut advantage, even though it looks like it's a middling board that hits the big blind well. It's not really that bad for us, because we have the sets, the overpairs, the top pairs. And that, and we don't, and we also have jack nine for the straight. We have some two pairs as well, we also open eight, eight, seven offsuit. So the big blind has some hands, like 10 eight offsuit, 10 seven offsuit. So it looks bad, but it's a good board for us. We might, we might range bet it, and that's why we go small. Often when you range bet, you bet small. So that's interesting. Not too bad, though, to bet it, I mean. The sizing was again awkward. Easy defense. I like that we switch the positions all the time, right? That we play button and big blind reversed. Uh, we check. Um, this is probably too weak to continue, especially against the big size. Now, we don't really dunk the flop a lot, Yatan. Turn and river is when you lead, it's not even called dunking anymore. When you lead out of position on the turn and a river, we don't call it dunking anymore. At least I don't. Flop is dunking. But I don't think we dunk or call. Okay. We don't dunk or call. This is a three-bet sometimes, but this, this stack is so bad, but yeah, let's, let's three-bet. Oh, I'm wrong. I would mostly call that hand, don't get me wrong, but I thought this was a spot to three-bet, but it's not. Yeah, 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 and I, and I mentioned the stack size, and I mentioned it was awkward. I should listen to my own advice more. So for 40 blinds, now this is 35 blinds even. Uh, we don't have three-bet bluffs, except king seven suited. What the hell? And this, this is a jam even. King seven suited jams, no tanks, please. And then we have some offsuit, aces that jam, and we have some offsuit, three-bet, small three-bet bluffs. But yeah, that's funny, right? On this stack size, we don't really bluff at the suited connectors, it's too, we want that deep stacked. 60 blinds deep, we wanna check raise, uh, three-bet, I mean, with 10 eight suited, nine seven suited, 10 seven suited, all these hands here, these suited middling cards. But not for this stack size. Yeah, that's weird, right? The, the pure king seven suited there. Weird stuff. Our bread and butter chat, the button with a decent hand, let's raise. Top pair on the queen seven six. Of course we bet, again a question of size. Is this a range bet board or not? No, don't think so. So I think we bet a larger here. It's also pretty dynamic, lots of straight draws and flush draws. So I think we go large here. But our options, five and 3.3. Yeah, I think I like five here, 82%. And we're all yellow. 40% of the time, I'll, I'll take it. We get min-raised. This is a thing because of stack sizes, right? If we call here, it's exactly one SPR left. If we call here, the pot gets 27, we have 27 left. Uh, interesting. Uh, of course we continue. The question is, do we jam this one or call and call turn? I'd be inclined to jam, because it's such an annoying board. Where again, if there's a king of spades on the turn, it's always the king of spades, right? We have an awkward situation where we have to let it go, maybe? But there's other bad cards for us. But does he do this with like a, an eight-nine type hand? Probably not, right? If he has eight-nine, he's probably jamming to take more, more fold equity. But I don't think he has like eight-nine, it could be a better queen. It could be a flush draw with some, uh, extra equity, like an ace ten of spades or something. I think it's more in that range, right? The small raise here, like it's a queen X or a good flush draw. But he's probably jamming with his no showdown draws, like eight-nine. Could also be a worse queen for sure, yeah. But we can't fold, but the question is, do we jam or do we call? And the combat says I would jam, so it's probably a call. Yeah, it's really hard to, uh, it's really, it's really easy to, uh, do it, do it completely different than, I do that all the time. Um. I think I'd be inclined to jam, so it's probably a fold. We have, we have, we have, uh, we have rolled a 33, but I'm not familiar using RNG. Um, but it could be a mixed game, a mixed play as well with this jack, with this queen jack, I'm all-in. See, it's fine, 25% of the time. He had jack five of spades, interesting. I said like, a good draw? It's not really a good draw, because the jack is not super live. Oh, he turned to five, right? No, we didn't, I don't know, I don't know, we bet all-in on the flop. We call sometimes, we raise sometimes, it's just mixed. So it's fine if we're confused then, right? It's fine if we're confused if it's mixed. All good, all good. We call five-six offsuit. Not really a board where we continue on, the six of spades is not good enough, I think. Nah. Okay, wow. So the 13% is probably a bluff, but raise then? Oh, now we check 100%. Huh? Oh, it's the spot after they bet, but I can't find that in this interface. So annoying. Let's not worry about it. Let's move on. Let's open this hand. Uh, we big three-bet from the big blind, we are deep. Generally, I'd fold these type of hands, but that might be good enough on the button. Like if you get three-bet with an offsuit Broadway. I'm almost always folding the offsuit Broadway, if I'm in a different position. It's only the button where we continue a bit wider. And in-game, I would also fold here, I think, against recreational, so three-bet me to 11 here. Um. So with all that in mind, I like a fold. But I can see GTO calling here. Did you turn on edge cases or something? No, not even this time. But that, uh, that could, that could explain why it's so tough today. Yeah, because if it's a weaker hand, we fold, right? Queen nine offsuit, we fold. And king queen is definitely a continue here, right? So I think indeed that queen jack offsuit here is, is borderline. In-game, I would fold it, because I think my general opponents are not three-betting wide enough. It's also a bigger sizing, right? It's going really big, so maybe we also fold. Morty Reminders of the Music. I'm gonna fold it. 35%. So often when a pre-opposition is close, when it's mixed, it's close, right? Oh, we have some four-bet bluffs. Oh, we have some four-bet bluffs. It's a good song, Morty. Star Trek Enterprise, I think I've seen a couple of episodes. I've never been a real trackie, I did watch the Jack Generation when I was younger. And I watched Voyager as well a lot when I was a little older. And I kind of lost my love for Star Trek at some point, I never really watched the series anymore at some point. It's a pretty epic song. Hey, chat, don't try this at home, but GTO wants to four-bet bluff with Queen Jack offsuit here. I would never think about using this hand as a four-bet bluff. I understand Ace 5 suited and stuff. I understand maybe even some pairs sometimes, but not Queen Jack offsuit. Okay, let's continue. It was okay to mix there, by the way, so against population fault. GTO goes mad, goes crazy, that's good, that's fine. Uh, this is good enough to call. We don't continue three deuce offsuit though. Um, so this is probably also close. I wish GTO the best of luck. Well, to be honest, Mela, I'd love to train my exploitive game better than my GTO game, of course. Because to actually get good at my stakes, I need to exploit harder. Um. I still believe in trading with this program is, is super beneficial. And I'm gonna keep doing it. I hope also to get some sales from the GTO wizard, uh. Link in the description, if you watch this on YouTube, by the way. Link in the description, 10% discount. Uh, but I really need a better way as well in general to study exploit spots or something. But that's, that's for another day. We'll find some way to do that as well at some point. Uh, Ace 9 offsuit, of course we call, but we could three-bet bluff sometimes. Meh. Okay, we do three-bet bluff sometimes. We flop middle pair, awkward, on a drawboard, drawy boards. They check back. I would have probably considered check raising. Because it's such a annoying board, but. Like with turn and rivers are good for us, you know? It's not gonna be a good situation. Except if it's a 9. Um. Yatan, do we lead dunk here? Flop and check, check. It's a probe then, right? Not a lead. I think I'd like to probe here. We have, we need protection, they check back. So I like a bet. Folded bet. I like it. Yeah, certainly large because of the, the wetness of the board. We need protection, we can get value from Ace 8. Sevens, sixes. There's some hands that can call me. Easy check raise. After it goes check, check, Yatan will check raise, I will lead pot. Okay, 5 blinds, almost pot. Wrong. We do check most of the time. Pretty sure it's not a check raise though, Yatan. Now we need to check that, eh? Now we need to check that. Okay, uh. I don't think we ever check raise Ace 9 there. I know you were sort of kidding, but I don't know, uh, so we, if we do check on the turn. And the button bets. What size is the button like? Uh, I can't, I can't get used to this interface. Big sizes a lot. Let's assume. Uh. Let's assume the big blind bets 82%. I don't think we ever check raise with this hand. Ace 9 is a pure call. 9 is a pure call. Ace 9 suited is a pure well. We raise 17% of the time. Yeah, we were the big blind, so I'm, I'm investigating if we, uh, check raise this turn as the big blind. And this is against the bet from the button. Where we call all our 9X and most of our 8X. This is, but this is interesting, by the way. We call these 8 axes, but we fold King 8 suited the most. Because we, we wanna, we wanna unblock kings. So that's why we want the, the worst kickers as a call and not the king, that's advanced GTO stuff. But you see sometimes that you want, uh, to call with your weaker kickers instead of your best kickers in this case. But back to the big blind, uh, on, on the turn. Our strategy on the turn, uh, looks like this. Pretty mixed, but we check. We check mostly. But we do bet Ace 9 suited, Ace 9 spades a lot. I forgot the board. Let's go back to the, let's go back to the trainer. Oh yeah, okay, yeah, there were spades, so that makes a lot of sense. Without spades, we, we hardly, we hardly bet. We do check a lot. Good, 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 good. Definitely a call. I think this mixes calling and raising. It's nice we have some runner straight draws, so on a 7 or a jack, we could continue betting the turn maybe. But maybe that makes more sense if we don't have the 8. Maybe that's better if you just have a 10. But I kind of like, I kind of like raising here on this very boring board. Maybe it's just a small raise to 3.9. That's my, that's my idea, chat. Because it needs some protection. We don't mind ending the hand here either. Great music we have alongside the study. Thanks everybody for joining in today. But that makes a lot of sense, Mela. But sometimes we can like merge our range a bit more and always raise small. Like, what? I don't, I, I can see that happen on this board, but maybe I'm wrong. There's straight rolls down there, but not that wet. Like, overcards are bad, of course, but. I'm gonna go with my guts and go small. It's wrong. Cool hand. Cool hand, Luke, maybe. Welcome, welcome, thanks for the follow. Uh, we continue now with the 6 on the turn. So what's our plan now after we raised the flop, eh? What's my plan now? Check call? We do check a lot, okay. And we guess we check call because we have an 8 and a gutshot. So yeah. There you go, 100%. And the river is the tough one, we don't lead here. We don't lead here. And this is interesting, chat. Now we get some river jam here. We still have second pair. Uh, how is our blockers? We want them to have 10 jack, so the 10 is bad. We want, so the 10 is a bad card, I think, we want them to have 10 jack and Queen 10, right? So we, we block their, we block their bluffs a little bit with the 10. So that's, that's one thing I can see here. And we also have a 10 of hearts. But she might turn into bluffs on the turn, like King 10 of hearts or something. So. Yeah, we check, no, we check raise the flop. Um. We check raise the flop small. But we are in a very weird part of the tree here, with only 1% of that sizing being correct. So we are never in this spot really. Because, but I chose that sizing, that's why we're in this spot now. Good evening, Tardim J. Guten tag. Um, I think we fold, and in-game, I would certainly fold. Against population. Um, but I think our blockers are also bad. Like we want, we want them to have 10 jack, we want them to have 10 queen. So I like a fold. In-game, I'm run, I'm running. You're running to the bathroom. You're vomiting first. And about a time bank runs out, you make a decision in a second. It's probably close, honestly, but I'm using my blocker as, as an excuse to fold here. Thanks for giving a shout-out. Yes, I found my pants, Tardim. But I could have, I could lie, but you would, you would never see proof probably. Oh man, it's a call. I knew, I knew it was close. But I, I thought the blockers were good enough of a reason, but we do bluff catch. The 8 is too strong. But still, if you get in this spot in-game, probably fine to overfold. But this is a pure call in GTO land. Let's move on. You're running, yeah. Uh, let's open this. We know this is opening. Uh, we small C-bet range here? Two Broadway's often good for us. Don't see any reason to go large here, really. Let's go 2. It's allowed, it's allowed. Yeah, I like this turn lead, so when the big blind calls the flop, he has way more 5X than we have, right? So the pairing of the low and the middle card is often very bad for pre-op caller. For the out-of-position player. That's why the big blind is allowed to lead here. Also with his bluffs, because he has more 5s than we have. This is something I learned like pretty recently, this is pretty, and it sounds so easy if you, if you hear it, right? Uh, and I think we just call here. Our hand just wants to go, I mean, our hand wants to go to showdown, sort of, we can just call river. Maybe it's a weak line. But, uh. Yeah, we might be up against a good player, Mela, they might have studied this game. Okay, we do just call, that's fine, that's cool. Oh, that's a very bad run out. Because he also has more 10s than we have now. And, uh. I think we could be call, but I'm not in love with it. But we unblock hearts, we could do this with a straight draw that turns his hand into a bluff because of the 5, because it's a good card for his range. So in GTO land, I think we have to defend here with the queen. Um, he might not do it with a 10 on the turn either. He might, he might just check his 10 on the turn and only bet with a 5 or a bluff. That being said, he went small, he only bet 2 blinds, so. Could say that's a more wider range than, it's not a polarized range, right? So maybe also does a bit of 10. Very interesting. I think we have to call because our hand is too strong, but, uh, again, an interesting spot. Alright. Ah, he had the 10, by the way. He had the 10. So we do fold mostly here. Interesting, interesting, interesting. So I guess that means, yeah, if he has a 10 in his range more, and he does have a 10 in his range, because he shows us his hand. Uh, it becomes an easier fold, but I, I just decided that he has more 5X and less 10X, so it's only the 5 we're losing to. And bluffs we're winning against. And that's why I decided to bluff catch. Top pair is a good bluff catcher usually. But we do, we, we should mostly fold. Hey! Yeah, it's best heftig shit, that GTO, eh? Best heftig shit. Thanks so much for the subs, Yatan. 22 months is no joke. That's also best heftig, 22 months. Oh, the 4, the 4 is a good 35. Blind jam, I think we fold. Um, but the question here more is, how small does this raise have to be, like? I think he's jamming a lot of, yeah, he jams deuces and trees, but he, he also jams 5s and 6s probably like this. And lots of Ace X offsuit. I think it's too big, but in-game, it's too big, maybe GTO calls. Some fights, it's hard to switch sometimes between real life and GTO land. Yeah, if he jams deuces and trees, and I know the big blind does for 35. That's a lot of hands we're beating now suddenly, right? Because this is a very narrow jamming range. And he probably doesn't do it with aces and kings, right? That's a small two-bet. So yeah, I'm, I'm more inclined to call now, yeah, because of, well, what you guys are saying. And thinking about it. Um. Bunga Cat told me if he jams 2 pairs under your pair, you call, that's a good reel of thumb. Of course, the, the, the pot odds matter in this case, right? Um. Because, uh, the, the pot odds are really bad here. Like, 46% we need. Um, there's lots of pre-op spots where, yeah. Where that made sense, that makes sense if you get 2 to 1 or something, right? 32%. But I think because 46% pot odds is so bad, like we risk so much for so little investment, like. But yeah, and it's still probably, I mean, Bunga Cat is a good player, so he probably has a point. But it might not be applicable here. Applicable, applicable. Uh, let's cycle. Let's cycle, 69%! 69%, that means it's close. Let me check those ranges for a second. Let me check those ranges for a second. Let's look at the jamming range from the big blind. For 35. Oh, wow! I, I, I'd assumed that even 8 go for smaller, uh, three-bet pre. But yeah, we do jam all the offsuit, all the, all the, all the small pairs. And then a little bit of offsuit aces. Uh, Mela said, Yatan says he jams Ace 2 suited, nope. It surprises me though that he never, uh, yo, Bullets! Yeah, maybe we get just edge spots every time, Mela, so that, I don't know if that makes it like, that might, might be a coincidence that I'm always seem to be on the edge. Every poker player just uses it as an excuse, right? This must be close. Then you always sound smart. But yeah, this is the bu, big blind jamming range, so yeah. If I would see this range, I would probably fold to force. I expected a bit more Ace X and a bit less 9s, 8s, 7s. Uh, but it's still a call sometimes, and it's bottom of range, and I guess better hands we call. Interesting, interesting. 9, 7 offsuit, uh, I don't like it. I think it's 9, 8 offsuit. And Jack 9 offsuit, right? So this is a fold. Oh! Fucking hell. It is a raise, what the fuck? Okay. I apologize. We do open 9, 7 offsuit. Another top pair with the queen. I think it's just a small bet. Usually bet smaller on paired boards as well. It's a dry board. We probably bet range. How many deuces does the big blind have? He calls King deuce offsuit, Queen deuce offsuit. For the rest, meh. Bit more offsuit, bit more suited deuces maybe, but that's just a small portion, it's not that bad of a card. Queen 6, 6 would be better for, for them. Why is this red? Why is this bad? So we should bet even smaller, okay? We, we encountered that, that earlier today, that I bet 33 and it's smaller. I should consider a 20% bet more often. Um, that would be the best as well. Yeah, paired boards often bet 20%, right? Yeah. That's true. Um. We flopped the, the nothing. Yeah, there's marbles coming up soon, Bullets. We flopped the nut nothing, and I think we have some checks here. I don't think this board is a range bet. Yeah, this flop. This, this is like if I would play poker against my Dutch friends. I would say, de flop begrijpt mij niet, dit heeft niks te maken met mijn hand, kan ik een nieuwe hand krijgen of een nieuwe flop, één van de twee? Sorry for the Dutch. This is just so disconnected. We even mostly bet, oh my god. We have runner straight draw, I guess. Uh, we have to run a straight draw, chats. Now we have to continue, right? No, I checked the flop, so. Uh, I think we check again then. Hmm. What a, what a weird hand. Do I bluff now? I look so fucking weak. Which hand do I check twice here that can prospectably go for value now, you know? Why do we look so weak? Doesn't matter how we look, it's all GTO, but... 55? But what do we represent? Missed spades? I probably bet them a lot. Yeah, okay. Yeah, maybe ace-4? Maybe I check back ace-4 and river trips? So... That could be a thing. Um, so we have some 4x, I guess. That makes it a bit more fun to actually bluff here, right? We have some bluffs to counter our value. And then what bluffs are better to use to counter our value? We want to block their straights? Queen 9 blocks their straights. Now we're getting somewhere. I found some value hands for myself, and we're blocking some straights. Let's bet! Alright! We're getting good at this game! It is a good bet. 60% of the time we bet 3.5, and we also bet some largers, I think. Wow. Alright. Um, do we want more of this, Chats? Do we want some more GTO stuff? Or are we already exhausted by it? We can do a quick marble race and then do another 15 minutes or so. With some refreshed energy. Border. But we do fold the king-4. I'm on a streak now, though. Let's continue the streak, right? Oh dear. I almost folded it, but we learned recently, this is a call. I don't like it. But this is a call, right? Jack-4 offsuit is the border. There you go. So keep the streak alive. Welcome, Dutch Nicky. Uh, we flopped the nut-nothing, right? I can see us continue here. And we keep the streak alive. What do you mean with make the study pay? Definitely a call with 6-5? I think we continue this streak and then it might be enough for today with the GTO stuff. The stream continues though, with some other content. Fold to 6-5? This is the longest streak we've had today. Uh, jack-5 is a call on the big blind, because the button is supposed to open 50% of their hands, so that's a super wide range. And we get a great price. The pot odds are 5-1, 4.5-1. That's the basic idea why we call so wide in the big blind. Um, I would also fold jack-5 offsuit in-game a lot. It's really on the borderline. Um... It's really on the borderline. So against population, it's fine to fold the bottom of your continue range there. Jack-4 offsuit, jack-5 offsuit, queen-deuce offsuit. Because also your opponent's probably open tighter than GTO on the button. In-game, I'd be fine folding jack-5 offsuit. But GTO, it's a call. I am in a good mood. Um, and there might be some cash games later. Uh, but I first want to play a real game, an actual non-poker game. We'll see, we'll see. Um, I think we check back top pair, we kicker sometimes, on some boards. But it's completely fine to always bet here too, I think. But we have some checkbacks with top pair. What do you mean, Bullets? Did you mean my explanation why jack-5 is a call? Or this pot we're looking at here? I'm glad to explain things, if I can. I'm not a GTO wizard yet, but I know some things. Um, so we did bet the flop. Um, we do get called. He calls with 9x, 6x, ace-x, flush draws. So I think we just continue here, right? It's probably a 2-street value hand, though. So we probably have to bet either the flop or the river, uh, or the turn of the river, right? 2 streets. But then the question is, do we rather bet the turn or the river? I think we'd just rather bet the turn here. Maybe half pot? Ooh, damn. Does that kill my streak? That kills my streak. Fucking, fucking hell. So we should check or larger? I'm on the right line there, you know? I decide we have one more street of value. So I was already debating checking. I make the bet, but it's just a little too small. We go a little larger. Man, that's an annoying way to end the streak. I would re-raise jack-5 there if I wanted to show some type of bluff. Yeah, jack-5 offsuit is a very bad hand to choose as a bluff. Um, it has very, very bad playability post-flop if you get called. It doesn't block their open range well. Um... So that's why jack-5 offsuit is not a great hand to bluff with. And then the only question remains, do we call or fold? And it's just a matter of pot odds versus their range. Uh, combined with post-flop playability, and I know jack-5 offsuit sucks. But GTO has arrived at the solution that we have enough showdown value as playability post-flop. Look, if you flop a pair, you know, with jack-5 offsuit against the button, that's a good hand. We continue for 1 or 2 streets. And if you're not comfortable defending those hands, that's fine. You can fold more pre and get yourself in less awkward spots post-flop. Um, but this is just not showing as the perfect ranges. Perfect ranges. Yo, Evil Eddie scored 12 in the daily flip-out. Oh, nice! Yeah, people always get rich on Saturday after they played Russian Cash with me on a Friday night. Every Saturday we wake up, "Hey, we got some C dollars in our account." GG, thanks question. Indirectly, because they may be playing more than they would have without my streams. I also got 25, I think, uh, Saturday. I min-cast the free roll too. Hey, uh, I'm gonna look at that spot for a second, Bullets. If you want, if you want, we can look at that spot a bit more detail. Um... For quick seconds, I always like to help people that are active in chat, so... Um, and of course, I already gave the explanation. It's not more complicated than that, but let's just look at the spot. So... Let's just take 50 blinds deep, empty teeth. And then uh, the button min-races. This is the button's min-race on the button. 50% of hands, including uh, jack-doo-suited, which we dominate with jack-5, right? Important. If your opponent isn't opening this wide, you can of course fold jack-5 offsuit, jack-6 offsuit, even jack-7 offsuit. Uh, jack-8 offsuit probably always is a call. Because you get such a good price, you can flop straight draws, 2 pairs. I think jack-8 offsuit is always a call in the big blind versus a min-race, but you know, you can adjust, we have to adjust in the real poker world. But you gotta just imagine this range and try to think of does your opponent do this, you know? Or do they fold all these speculative hands, you know? The 9-5 suited, the 10-3 suited? That matters. But if the button races, this is the calling range in the big blind. We call every suited hand. And as weak as 5-3 offsuit on this side, and as weak as jack-5 offsuit and mixed jack-4 offsuit. So it's already on the border, right? Like I said earlier. We don't make a lot of money with it, but we make enough to call. And that's also because our pot odds are awesome, right? 4.5-1. Roughly, I think we often need 18% equity. That means in all the post-up scenarios together, we need 18% of the pot. So we can fold a lot. We need to just defend our top pairs, our 2 pairs, you know, we need to just continue often enough to realize that equity. I hope that helps. I can't do it, I can't explain it better than that. Um, also, if you want a three-bet bluff, you want to use these hands in this spot. The suited connectors, suited gappers uh, do much better as three-bet bluffs. Because if we get called, we have some great playability, we can flop some flush draws and stuff. But we never really use, uh, well, we do use here, you can see we use some offsuit ace-king-high hands as bluffs, so we can do it sometimes, but jack-5 is certainly too weak to do that with. Yeah, you have to submit them before the stream, Ykora. I already explained that. But uh, that's okay. There's always another week. Welcome to the stream. We just dived into some details about big blind defense there. It is time for, and we are gonna continue with some GTO wizard stuff. Well, my OBS is warning me my disk space is running out. Very, very scary number to see go down. I don't know, what am I doing that it goes down right now? I'm not saving this video? The OBS is warning me that my disk space is running out. I still have 600 megabytes though. So I should be fine. Shouldn't be that much of an issue. Yeah, 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 Morty, that sounds good. That's a good place to use it on. Okay, let's continue with some button versus big blind. Both spots reversed. I'm gonna open the 7-5 here. At least you got that right. This is one of those flops where you think, like you said before the break, "Can I get a new one, please? This is not really what I was looking for." The only question here is, do we range bet? And that means do we range all, do we bet all of our hands here? On the king-10-3? I can see it. I can see it. Um, I'm not in love with it though, but we should have enough fold equity. You know, he has so many nothings, you know? The big blind has jack-5 offsuit, we just learned, right? And so many other crappy hands he can't continue with, so... I guess we just bet the range. Or 16% of the time? Wow. Uh, we turn a 5. I don't really want to build a pot here. We're ahead of his 3x and some draws, but I still think we check here. Seems a bit weird to keep betting on this weak hand. So I'll check here. Alright. Oh, that's a good river. That's an interesting river. Now we can value bet for sure. Sizing? I guess this falls in our large size, mostly. We can get called by a king or a 10. Does he have a lot of kingx though, the way the big blind played? Called flop, check, turn, yeah, yeah, some kingx, certainly some 10x. I'm gonna go for the 84%, I think. Alright. Mostly chosen that size. That makes me happy. That's good enough. You bought Rocket League when it was not a free game yet, okay. That's uh, yeah, I thought, I gave it a try because it was free mostly. But I enjoyed my first one or two hours. I was bad, but I scored a couple times. You know, you can easily get a goal, so... Even in your first game. King-4-3, we had a spade. Think we bet small. Again, the spot where we just range bet. And that means we also bet our ace highs. On other type of boards, you might check your ace high back. But I think we bet here. Alright, good enough for me. 8 of spades. Do we keep bluffing this hand? With our extra value we have now? He might fold a 4 or a 3. Yeah, no worries, Mella. Yeah, it's hard to study without, uh, yeah, if you're playing it hard. I mean, it's impossible normally, right? Because you can have GTO wizard open yourself, but you can have my stream open. That's allowed. Um... Maybe some other people will participate? Ana Kombay, Ytante. Morty can also say what they think about it. Anybody in chat can say what they think about it. Um, this is not an easy decision though. But like, we have enough equity to continue. But maybe checking back is best, because we realize our equity easy. But the queen of spades is pretty strong. And maybe we can fold back, fold out his 4x and 3x that he called the flop with. But I think I like a bet. But it's a bit counterintuitive because I don't love bluffing with ace-high. You'd love to have a bit of a more polarized bluffing range. But because we bet range on the flop, I guess we have to continue bluffing with some ace highs as well. But my plan is too bad again. Not really, 9% of the time though, but not really. But we miss our flush or our pairs. Yeah. Basically the same logic as on the turn, but now we don't have any semi-bluff options anymore. We can still fold out 4x and 3x. We have all the kingx in our range, we block some flushes. We block some turn flushes with the queen of spades. We still have aces in our range, ace-king, king-queen. That bet turn, bet flop, bet river? Not sure why I said turn, flop, river in that order, but... Jam if your name is Lex? I think I'd like it jam more with the ace of spades instead of the queen of spades, but it's close, right? This is the second plus blocker. We do see the big overbet, right, with the ace-high plus blocker? Lex plays more, Lex probably plays more GTO than I do, so... What do we think, Chats? Don't hurt me. Do we bluff the river here or do we check back our showdown value? The problem is, what showdown do we have? Like, they called flop and turn. I don't think we have that much showdown value with ace-high in that kind of situation. So I kinda like a jam, honestly. I kinda like a jam. To maximize fold equity against any hand weaker than a kingx. All his 4x, 3x, 8x. And it kinda helps, we have the queen of spades. I don't hate jamming. 50/50! Okay, let's uh, let's jam. It's wrong. It's completely wrong. You don't get any cookies. We don't go behind start, we don't get any 20k. Flop turn of river was fine though. But we do check this 100% of the time, alright. Too many kingx in their range. Not enough fold equity. Alright. I can live with that. What is love? Baby, don't hurt me. Don't hurt me. What is love? Range bet. Even though he has more 7s than I have, I still think we bet a lot here? Meta-tex. We can also go 20% on the paired board. We do see the 20% lot on the paired board, right? I'm aware it's not the best paired board for us, right? These middling cards are better for the big blind. Yeah, we have less trips. But on the button, it's less of a problem, right? If I was under the gun, it would be a problem. Because then we have only 8s suited. Uh... But on the button, we have some 7s, you know? We have jack-7 offsuit, maybe? Uh, that's a little too wide. We have king-7 offsuit, ace-7 offsuit. 5-7 offsuit, 6-7 offsuit. I think we have quite some trips here. A little less than the big blind, though. But I don't think it's a big deal, so we bet. We bet, it's fine. 50% of the time. Um, we check back now? Okay. And now he overbets the river. We blocked 10-jack. Not that that is a big part of his range after calling the flop. So that blocker is quite useless. Um... Does he do this with a 7 sometimes? I guess. I guess GTO plays a 7 like this sometimes? Um... He's not doing a bit of deuce, though. The good thing is we unblock spades, right? So he can have some spades draws that missed? A better call than 6s or 5s? Hmm, interesting. Hmm, interesting. Because we block his ace highs? Uh... I'm confused. Well, I would fold this in-game, uh, almost always. Um, that's something we dive into a lot of the GTO versus exploits, but... This looks very strong in-game, but we're trying to answer the question if GTO calls here. We unblock bluffs. Yes. We do. It's good, it's also good we don't have spades. That's... Yeah, 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 sixes and fives block, uh, yeah. Yeah, five-six gets there. But how many, how many four, five, and five-six call the flop? They'd rather bluff with that and not call the flop. So that might make it matter less. Um... If the big blind would have check raised the flop, then that blocking those cards matters more? I think we should call with some ace highs. The question is, which ace highs are the best? Um... Yeah, he's not bluffing ace high. So it must be spades a lot. Sir spades a lot. And that we unblock, that we block, so... I'm gonna bluff catch. Oh dear. It's a fold. Alright. Let's take a look at what we call with, probably actually learn something. This is the river? Yeah. This is the river. Uh, we fold ace-jack offsuit. We do call ace-queen offsuit more, and ace-king even more. Interesting. And we call ace-five more, yeah. Ace-jack is the worst ace high, basically, compared with ace-ten. Same on the suited side. Why is that? Why are these ace highs so bad? Not super clear to me. Of course, we call with all the nine X. Because it's hard to make a pair in poker. We refer the trips with eights. It turns some eight X into bluffs, or eight-seven is two pair. Oh, well, interesting. It's correct, we should defend some ace highs as bluff catchers. But not ace-jack or ace-ten. That's the main summary here. Um... So we'd rather call with ace-five here? So that's reversed what you thought, Smellah. It also surprises me. Uh... Ace-king I can see because ace-king, we still can get, we still call and be ahead of his queen ten sometimes. But that doesn't matter here. Uh, I mean, uh, ace-queen, I don't know. I don't know why ace-king calls more than ace-jack. Sometimes we just don't know. I'll be okay with that. Let's move on. Couple more hands, and then I think we had enough, uh, GTO study in our brain for today. Might try to get a streak going, though, if we continue to play well, which we don't. Ten-seven offsuit. We just looked at this. No, not the specific one. Um, but if jack-five is a call, then this is probably a call too. Very borderline, though. Yeah, it's a call. In GTO land, it's a call. Bottom of our range. And this board, we just check fold. We have nothing. At least that keeps the streak alive. Oh, no, we just started a new streak. What did I do wrong there? Nothing, right? Uh, this probably three-bet sometimes. Oh! Well, I was more right than I thought. Yeah, we only jam. Pure jam! We pure jam. It's kind of surprising. Against the button min raise, this is our range in the big blind. So yeah, I do understand the jam of the pairs. Even though I personally don't do it for forty, it's probably not super useful, but... But then specifically ace-jack offsuit, ace-queen offsuit, also do it. Yeah, to balance the pairs, yeah. Alright. Forty blind jams. I don't, I never forty blind jam, I think. After the three-bet, sure, but purely? Jam forty blinds? I don't know if I do that ever. Hey, we saw this, Chads. We just saw this. Hold him! What a perfect play. That shortcut closed my window. Maybe that's a sign.